Can we have a roll call, please?
Board member Burley.
Present.
Board member Schmentze.
Present.
Vice chair Farina.
Present.
Board member Isak Gudell or Gudell?
Gudell.
Gudell.
Present.
Board member Lessig.
Present.
Board member Menendez.
Present.
Hey, you've all seen the agenda, are there any amendments to the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda. Item number 10, unfinished business of the board, I'd like to add election of officers.
Second.
Counselor, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. You're calling.
I made the motion so we have to do a roll call for the vote.
All right, you have a second.
Lessig.
I second, yes.
Yep.
Okay. Board member Burley.
Yes.
Board member Schmentze.
Yes.
Vice chair Farina.
Yes.
Make sure your microphones are on. Board member Dell.
Yes.
Board member Lessig.
Yes.
Board member Menendez.
Yes.
Is your light on, the microphone itself?
Yeah, he's on.
The green one, yeah.
He's on.
Welcome, by the way.
Thank you.
Okay. The agenda is approved as amended. Petitioners and members of the audience, the zoning board of appeals as herein created is a body of limited powers.
We'll go with the minutes.
I'm sorry. I thought that's what we just did. Oh, the agenda.
Agenda.
Okay, approval of the minutes. You all got a corrected copy of the minutes in your packets. Are there any additions to those corrections?
No, but I'd like to make the motion to amend the minutes as follows. The existing one was Menendez supported by Lessig to approve 27.5, not additional, plus existing 32 for a total of 59 and a half, which is size of the existing sign keeping within compliance. The corrected language on the amendment will be Menendez supported by Lessig to approve 27 and a half feet, not additional square footage, plus the 32 square feet allowed by the city ordinance for a total of 59 and a half square feet. By virtue of this variance, the applicant will be allowed to keep the existing sign of 59.5 square feet.
Any other changes? All accept a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
I'll second.
We don't need a roll call. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, formal statement. Petitioner and members of the audience, the zoning board of appeals as herein created is a body of limited powers. Where there are practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships in the way of carrying out the strict letter of the Frazier Code, the board will have the powers in passing upon appeals to vary or modify any of the provisions of the code relating to the construction, structural changes in the equipment, or alteration of buildings or structures so that the spirit of the code shall be observed, public safety secured, and substantial justice done. No variance in the provisions or requirements of the code shall be authorized by the board unless the board finds evidence that all of the following facts and conditions exist. A, that there is exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applying to the property in question as to the intended use of the property that do not apply generally to other properties in the same zoning district. That such variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of a substantial property right similar to that possessed by other properties in the same district and in the same vicinity. The possibility of increased financial return shall not be of itself deemed sufficient to warrant a variance. C, that the authorizing of such a variance will not be of substantial -- tongue tied, that the authorization of such a variance will not be of substantial determine to the adjacent properties and will not materially impair the intent and the purpose of the Frazier Code or the public interest. D, that the condition or situation of the specific piece of property or the intended use of the property for which the variance is sought is not so general or recurrent in nature as to make reasonably practical the formal formulation or general regulation for such a condition or situation. Having said that, we have a public hearing tonight, and that is on item number 20 through 3-02, variance request by Meyer sign is the -- here. Mr. Lippman.
Hey, thank you. So the applicant, Allied Signs, seeks variances to install three additional wall signs onto the Meyer facilities, yeah, which is located in the CG commercial zoning district. These three signs are as follows. One is a 73.75 square foot sign at one end of the front building facade that reads "Home." The second is a 69.19 square foot sign at the other end, far end of the front building facade that reads "Fresh." And these two signs are planned to be 215 feet apart. And the third proposed sign is a 33.01 square foot sign on the side of the Meyer gas station that reads "M Express" and identifies the city of Frazier. So under section 32-852D of the zoning ordinance, only two signs are allowed for each business in the CG district, and the two signs together may not exceed 96 square feet in area, which is 48 square feet each. And as background, in February of 1994, variances for five wall signs on the front facade of Meyer were approved. One that says Meyer, another "Why Pay More," another parcel pickup, and two welcome signs. So of course, to determine if a variance should be granted, we look to section 32-22A2 of the ordinance. To grant a variance, the ZBA must find evidence that all the facts and conditions of A through D exist, or E or F independently. Sorry. So in this case, E and F don't apply, so we only analyze A through D. A states that there are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applying to the property in question or to the intended use of the property that do not apply generally to other properties in the same zoning district. So as to this factor, I believe the wayfinding signage is necessary because of the unique size and layout of the Meyer retailer. It's the only business in the city with entrances to different departments that are situated so far apart, 215 feet apart. And I write in my review that while denying this variance would result in an inconvenience for able-bodied shoppers, this proposed signage is vital for those with limited mobility who would be severely challenged if they chose the wrong entrance. And I would also like to note, so I went to this property, and I stood in the parking lot, and I would have no -- I was looking at the front facade, and I would have no idea which entrance to go into if I wanted groceries as opposed to home goods. And I was actually pretty surprised because I've never seen that at a Meyer. Passed by so many different Miers, and they always have that signage there. However, while I believe the reasoning that I just stated applies to the wayfinding signs on the Meyer's front facade, it doesn't apply to the proposed gas station signage. According to the applicant, the gas station signage is necessary because, quote, "It lets people stopping for fuel know they are an express store that offers a wide variety of food and snacks along with what city they're in for patrons traveling through." That was stated in supplemental material that the applicant provided us with. But I don't find this convincing, and there's really no justification in my mind for granting that part of the variance. B states that such variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of a substantial property right like that possessed by other properties in the same vicinity, and we know that the possibility of increased financial return shall not of itself be deemed enough to warrant a variance. Think that all other businesses in the area are able to provide customers with the merchandise they seek once they enter the front entrance. And so I state in my review that Meyer needs the wayfinding signs on its facade to enjoy the same right that's given its size and layout. C states that the authorizing of the variance will not be a substantial detriment to adjacent property and will not materially impair the intent and purpose of this chapter or the public interest. I believe that granting this variance as to the wayfinding signage on the front facade won't have any effect on adjacent properties, nor will it materially impair the intent and purpose of the ordinance or the public interest. And lastly, D states that the conditions or situation of the specific piece of property or the intended use of the property for which the variance is sought is not of so general or recurrent in nature as to create a general rule for such condition or situation. And as to this factor, as I previously mentioned, this is a nearly 250,000 square foot store with multiple departments, and that's not found anywhere else in the city. So therefore, granting a variance here would not create a general rule applicable to other properties. So therefore, my recommendation is that as to the proposed wayfinding signs on the front facade of the Meyer store, the applicant has met the ordinance standards for obtaining the variance. However, I do recommend denying its request for additional signage on the Meyer gas station for lack of a sufficient rationale. So if you do agree with me, as I stated at the beginning, the two Meyer signs add up to 142.9 square feet. So the variance would be for two additional signs and 142.9 square feet of signage area. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Lippman?
I have one for Mr. Lippman.
Sure.
On the drawing here, it says, "All existing vinyl sign area zero proposed." It looks like they're proposing two 4.5 square feet additional vinyl signs. Am I reading this correctly? Because you refer to, in Welcome, oh, I'm sorry. You refer to, in your write-up on page two, the Welcome signs of 42 square feet. That two were approved in 19...
94.
94.
Yep.
But on this drawing, it appears that they're adding two more at 4.5 square feet vinyl sign.
They're replacements. So the window vinyl, it's a replacement of the window vinyl. So now you'll have the two entries, so you'll have the window vinyl going up on the window.
So is it replacing the previous ones that were done in 1994?
It should be. I don't have...
Considerable size difference.
Yeah, well, they're, these are just, yeah, these are just readings above the glass. As far as the old Welcome letters, I don't even have them on the prints, so they're nonexistent. Like the, a couple of the other signs that were previously in the building won't be there. So you'll have the two Meyer letter sets, and then you would have potentially the Home, the Fresh.
Right.
And then at the entry doors, you would have the smaller sized Welcome letters that go over the double entry doors on each end of the building. And then they're looking back at the gas station. So you would have the pin mount set, so you'll have a total of two Meyer letter sets, one pharmacy drive-up flat cut set.
Wait, but my question to you, is this total of nine square feet included in our write-up for square footage area?
No, it was, it was my understanding that there were just three new signs proposed.
Correct.
Correct?
Right, that's what we're seeking the variance for.
Okay, all right. So perhaps those other ones are replacements for...
No, it says right on here, "Propose signage." It's showing as it knew for nine square feet on this drawing that I'm looking at.
That's, that's the master sign package, which falls under. So everything in the package would fall under the old variance and square footage allowed in the previous 94. These are, for the variance, are only the three signs. So the old Welcome signs are going away, and you'll have the window vinyl replacing them. So there's a reduction in the old...
Okay, that was my question. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I have something. Go ahead, Joe. Was there, on the building now, Great Clips has got a sign. Was there a variance pulled on that ever, on that? I mean...
What, on the Great Clips?
Mm-hmm.
I do not know. Sorry. I'm not aware of that.
Okay. That's, sign is looking, it's not within the range that it's supposed to be. Within the, within the variance. I was just curious to see if they ever pulled something on there, or they just put Great Clips on there, you know?
I'm sorry. Well, that wouldn't be, you mean in the past, if the Great Clips was part of some other variance that existed? No, I, I'm not aware of the Great Clips signage. Sorry. I don't know.
Okay. Are you set, Joe? Mr. Lessig?
Yes. And this goes back a long way, but I, this was a Source Club originally, Meyer Source Club. And so I don't know if they had others, they had other signage at some point in time. But I did go by the gas station yesterday, or the fuel station. They don't, there's no signage on the outside of that building at all, other than gas pumps. I would not know what that's...
Right, and in the current re-imaging and remodel plan for Meyer corporately, their gas stations are converting over to where they're adding an express element, which your bread, milk, and your staples. So what they're trying to do is by adding the seal with the city is a nice touch, but also advertising that you can go get gas, or you can just go to the express station and run in and grab your milk, bread, butter, that kind of thing, rather than going into, you know, the 200,000 square foot and dealing with all that. Steps and get in and out quickly. So it's a, it's a more convenient area to grab staples.
Mr. Lippman, if there is no other signage on that building, would that be considered a separate building? Would they even be required to have a variance for that?
Oh, for the, for the gas station, you're saying? Well, I believe it is, I have to check, but I believe it's per business. The number of signs per business, so it wouldn't be per building.
Yes, Counselor?
I can hopefully clarify. The way the ordinance is written is it's by, it uses the language "lot" and "parcel," and that is all one parcel. So where the Meyer store sits, as well as the gas station, is all one parcel. So it would, technically, although it's, you know, much bigger and from the outside, it looks like it's two separate businesses, the way the ordinance is written, they would need a variance for that additional signage.
Thank you. Can I ask a question, ignorant question? We've, they've done a lot of other buildings in that, in that whole area. Are those all considered separate parcels? I have not looked them up on Parcel Explorer, so...
That, um, yeah, so the, I think it's like the Coney Island and the...
Yeah, all of those.
Um, that is, it, yes, that's its own, those are all its own parcel.
Okay.
But it's just the Meyer store and the gas station. It's like a very oddly shaped parcel, but it's all one.
Okay. But if that was a separate parcel, technically, they could have their own signage without having to go through the variance process?
Uh, that's...
Potentially, according to the sign ordinance.
Yes.
But if it was a separate parcel owned by Meyer, it would simply be a separate parcel on its own.
That is correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for Mr. Lessig, or Mr. Lippman? Do you have anything to answer?
I think we've covered pretty much...
We need your name for the record, please.
That's Jim Fields, Allied Signs 33650, Giftos Drive in Clinton Township. And we've covered the Home and the Fresh, and the size of the entry, and you've, as you've pointed out, where the standalone gas stations, where you're dealing at the total lot size, and a lot of times you're seeing three or four out-lot parcels to separate businesses. And Meyer does not out-parcel their own gas stations. They leave them in there so it stays under their insurance reasons and dealing with the fuel, and that's all on the permitting of the state.
Okay.
But you're absolutely right. I mean, you look at the size of the lot, and the size of everything else, and it is a detached building. You know, sometimes that comes into where they try to mark it and identify it a little more. And, you know, a lot of times, if I'm coming through, and I'm at 15 in Utica, and I pull in and I need gas, you know, at 11 o'clock at night, I may not know what city I'm in. And that's just another point on what they're doing. So it's just, it's kind of a standard that they've rolled out across the region, and that's just their new imaging plan they found with their traffic. And they've done a lot more foot studies than, than I have as even a sign guy. So they, they're pretty sharp on what their studies find. But the Home and Fresh are definitely key. They've found that affects with people and getting it in and out effectively, especially anybody with disabilities or challenges, yes.
Would there only be one sign on the west wall?
You have, well, you have the, you have the Meyer...
I'm talking about on the gas station.
On the gas station, yeah, because that's, that's really where your fare is, because it's in a corner lot, so you're not coming in.
Okay.
So you've got to come, you have, your egress point is coming across the parking lot to get back over to the gas station.
Mm-hmm.
It's a weird layout. We've, we've done a lot of these, and this one is a, it's a strange layout on the buildings because your traffic patterns, where it is with Utica Road and at 15.
Mr. Burley.
Yeah, Mr. Fields, have you done other signs for Fresh and that at other Mieres around?
All of them.
Okay. So is this, are these the same size as the Home and the Fresh?
This is, we've done some that are larger. This is a different layout because the front of this building is mainly masonry.
Right.
A lot of times, they build the whole glass teepee huts, where then you'll have the letters going up on those, and those letters range between five foot in height to eight foot in height, so the spans on them will run to 18 to 24 feet.
Okay.
So the five foot is a, is a good size to fit in this facade. We do larger ones. We've got three projects up around Lansing right now that have large sets.
Okay. And so all these cities are approving also the ones for the, the gas station?
Yes.
So which cities?
I've got, uh...
Because I drove by all the ones around here, and none of them have anything to do with the, the Express.
Where, this market is just saying, and we're, right now, we've got two jobs in Lansing, Mason, Corona, that we're working on. So you're seeing the rollouts. The construction will start here, Frazier, and then they're planning to move through the metro area. So their target so far has been north and west.
Well, I drove by north and south, east and west, and that's got to be the worst place to put that sign. That's just my opinion. There's a big bush in the middle. You know, you can't really see it on 15 at all. Once you get by it, then you can see it. So if you're getting the customers that are there, I agree with you. But from the street, there's nothing. But what about just changing the, you have a Meyer sign right in front with all the gas prices, just change that sign?
Change the main ID sign?
Well, you have, you have, the main ID you have on both sides of Meyer. So you have it on 15, huge sign, same thing on Utica, huge sign. You also have that sign, well, if you're, if you're looking to promote the Express, put it right there where you can see it from everywhere. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, and the...
Are you seeing the gas price sign?
Their branding is not involving any of the monument signs with the gas prices to do that. It will just be mainly Meyer. The side pan with the Express and the city name is just a steel pan that they're putting on the building. The building locations are determined because on that wall is usually the only area in a stockroom. Everywhere else, they have coolers along the sides, or they have the electrical panels. So where they draw them, they draw them specifically for where that sign can be put in and still meet code, so we can get to the back and the electrical.
Yeah, I'm just looking for the hardship from the property that will allow us to give you the variance. And I see the, you know, ones for the Home and the Fresh, that makes sense.
The functionality.
But I'm having a hard time believe, or, you know, trying to come up, the hardship because of the property that gives you, gives us the authority to approve another sign.
So you would rather, so it's being proposed on the northeast elevation. So at the northeast elevation, you're saying that you would rather see it countered to the south, southeast elevation?
My, my...
No, I see that one, but with those brandings, they won't put the Express branding on there because that's not the brand. The Express is solely to the outbuilding with the gas canopy.
Yeah, but the...
So as far as their monument signs, they won't incorporate it on there.
So you have, so you're saying you have three monument signs?
Correct. One monument, two poles. Yep.
I'm sorry, say that again?
So we have, we have, we have...
No, I'm talking, talking total Frazier, that big building. You have a big monument sign on 15. You have a big monument sign on Utica, and then you have an angled one right in front of the gas station.
With the prices, yeah.
Yes, that's my...
Yeah, they, they won't change that one to a Tows Express. It'll just stay, just the Meyer.
Okay.
That's, that's corporately what they'll do. On all their pylons and all their monument signs where they have a tenant panel, it will just be the Meyer script. You'll see in a few select locations that will be open back at 24 hours, but they've gotten away from the 24-hour model. So it'll just be the Meyer letters.
Okay.
Any other questions? Joseph? Why couldn't we have stayed within the variance? Or... Have to go so big. Why can't we have...
For the five-foot letters, just the visibility. You won't, you'll lose them on the side if you get under five foot. So from the end of them, as you're coming in through that parking lot, a five-foot letter fits the facade, it's proportionally okay, and it's visible.
Studied, been studied, or...
Yeah.
Why all of a sudden, what, it's been, you know, no signage there for years, and what happened that we're, you know?
When they, when they do the remodels, they redo the layout and the footprint internally of the stores. So when they're actually going through and they're laying out their SKUs and their keys, they've divided it out so that way they can control the flows if you're coming looking for home goods, or department store stuff, or whether you're a grocery shopper. So that way, they, they've defined the traffic patterns and they're laying out the stores. So as they go through the remodel, they're doing the interior, but they're also doing a complete interior, exterior wipe at the same time.
Okay.
So a lot of them, they're actually going from single entries to where they're adding a double entry. They're knocking out the old singles, they're blocking them off and adding two entryways now to fit the Home Fresh instead of the one. The Belleville remodel was a recent one where they did that. They went from one entry, they added two entries, and they completely redid the whole front of the building to fit that for egress.
Any other questions? Is there anybody in the public that would like to be heard? Anybody in the public that would like to be heard? Hearing nobody, I'll bring it back up to the board. If we're done discussing, then it's time for motion.
Oh, okay. I'd like to approve a variance from the zoning ordinance, ordinance standard to exceed the number of allowable signs on a commercial general district zone property to allow an additional two signs requested beyond the number previously granted by prior variances and to obtain a variance from the zoning ordinance standards to exceed the maximum allowable sign area on the commercial general district zone property, the maximum 96 square feet permitted, an additional 142.92 square feet requested beyond the number of previously granted prior variances. And that's because of the size of the building, the multiple entrances, and to help with the flow of the traffic and wayfinding.
And that's because of the size of the building, the multiple entrances, and to help with the flow of the traffic and wayfinding.
Is there a second to that motion? Support? Any discussion on that motion?
I have a question for Mr. Brooly. So that's 73.75 and the 69.19, correct?
The, it would be the additional two, which is the 69.17 and the 73.75 for one for the fresh and one for the home. Equals an additional 142.92.
So what you're, are you looking to handle the other signs separately?
I am not touching that sign. This is for my, this is the approval that I am allowing. If somebody wants to change it...
Counselor? Should we handle this one, or?
I would do them all together. If there's, I guess what I'm trying to say is if there's going to be a motion to approve the additional signage, I guess you could do them separately. No, it should be all together. I'm sorry, I'm just thinking. I would make the motion altogether. So if your motion is to approve the home and the fresh, but not approve the gas station sign, then that should be included in your motion.
But it's still just, it's allowing two with the total square footage?
That is correct.
So why would you have to say not approve for the additional? Because they're only asked, they're asking for three signs at a certain square foot.
I think, I mean, for clarity's sake.
Okay.
That would be my recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I guess I need help wording that, how, so you, you're not gonna, we're not gonna give a approval for the additional sign?
Or to deny the, the request for the additional square footage and the amount of, I'm not sure how much that other sign is.
33, 33.01.
I would add that language.
Thirty-three?
33.01.
Point zero one. Okay, so I'd like to add to that, to deny the additional sign and the extra 33.01 square foot for the signage.
Draw your second?
Yes, I would do withdraw my second.
Are you reseconding the second motion?
No, I don't, I would like to talk more about the Meyer Express sign. So I don't support the motion as made because I, I just have reservations about the gas station, so.
Okay, let's talk about it.
Oh, you want me to talk about it? Okay, wanted to make sure. I guess my, my question there, and I'm newer to this board, is but for the fact this is a single parcel, this building would be able to have a sign on it up to 32 square feet or 48 square feet, whatever the sign ordinance would allow. There are no other gas stations in that immediate vicinity that would be impacted negatively by having this building with additional signage on it indicating that it has this express service. There's no other stores in the area that would be negatively impacted in their business. So I guess I would like to see if there's a way we can do that without, and allow that third sign. I don't see a negative impact to other businesses in the area. And every other business that we've allowed in that area to be built in the last few years has had plenty of signage associated with it. So is there a way, a path forward where we could do that?
Ms. Menendez.
I agree with Mr. Lippman. The problem with it is, is that you can justify reasons for the home and the fresh that exceed the required footage. As far as the M sign, there's no practical difficulty or hardship, unlike you have for the home and the fresh. You know, for people to be able to see it, you've redone it, it moves them in a certain direction. Unfortunately, with the M sign, I, I can't, I can't find a hardship or practical difficulty. So I, I agree with Mr. Lippman on that as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, well, I...
And Mr. Brooly.
And I, I understand that. I would say that too, one of the justifications was the way, what did you call it, way?
Wayfaring.
Wayfaring.
Wayfaring, thank you. To go into that store by having this sign on the gas station and people becoming familiar with the Meyer Express, they would know, well, oh, I can just go here. And if they had disabilities or mobility issues, they could quickly go in here rather than navigate the 250,000 square foot store. That's, it's a thin read, I understand that, but that, so...
I actually find that compelling, that it would be a help to handicapped and elderly people so that they would not have to try to traverse that store. And I know you're trying to get things in there to, to move people out faster, but if, if you go into that store, you are stuck there.
And the milk, I don't know what the, you said milk, red staple items? Milk is in the back of the store. It's 100 yard span, it's, it's a long, good long walk.
It's similar to like, we would have a lot of old burger dairy stores. You'd have your Dairy Walk-Ins or a lot of 7-Elevens are stylized to do that where it's just a grab and go. There's a lot of areas that are going to where they can do drive-through service where you can play shorter and they'll, they'll bring it out to you right at the gas station. So we'll see if that makes it here, but that's a, I've seen in a lot of states.
Squidle, you have anything to add?
Oh, I actually think it's a good idea. Like for, you know, my mom's trying to, she can't navigate through her store. You know, she has handicap issues and that. For her to know that and that, you know, I mean, I, I think it's not a good idea.
Mr. Schmette?
The prices in the M store, are they the same as the store, the big store?
Yes.
So there, there's no variance in, excuse me, no variance in prices or anything, so?
Yep.
So it's the same price?
Yep.
Well, I guess with Mr. Brooly being the motion maker, it would be up to him.
It would be up to you guys to make a different motion, if you want something different.
Because they, there is no second to your motion now?
Yes.
So your motion, if it does not have a second, Counselor, it dies?
Correct.
Okay, so that motion fails? Mr. Lessig, do you want to make a motion?
Not sure I'm qualified to make a motion with all the necessary details, but...
We'll help.
But what?
We'll help.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to, to provide a variance from zoning ordinance standards to exceed the number of allowable signs on a commercial general district zone property and to obtain a variance from zoning ordinance standards to exceed the maximum allowable sign area on commercial general district zone property. An additional 175.93 total square feet requested beyond number previously granted by prior variances. That would include three signs, one which is 73.75 square feet indicating home on the facade of the building, one that is 69.19 square feet indicating fresh on another side of the main building, and then an additional sign on the outbuilding gas station of 33.01 square feet that says M Express. That would be...
In the hardship?
And the hardship would be to provide additional access and accessibility to customers of the store. And I'm not sure what other, what I would add to that is...
Mr. Lippman? Why were you, where was your wording for the hardship?
Hold on one second. Well, I didn't, I didn't state it just like that. I would say that the, the... Well, I, yeah, sorry. I would say that the, the wayfinding signage at the front, right, it's, it's necessary because otherwise, or, sorry, that it's vital for those with limited mobility who'd be severely challenged if they choose the wrong entrance because they don't know which one to choose.
Thank you.
As, sorry, if, if, but as to the gas station, that was my, yeah, okay, got it.
I find personally that for the gas station, the same thing that applies to what Mr. Lippman said for the main store applies to the gas station for people of even more limited mobility, that it's easier for them to get in and out of a smaller location than to try to navigate through the larger location. I also find that with the layout of the parcel now, it is a, it is in a regular shape now because of all the splits that the city has allowed. And therefore, this could be considered, if it was not the same company, a separate parcel and therefore would be allowed a sign on its building. And that, I think that's about it. Is there anything else you'd like to hear in there, Counselor?
That was going to be my suggestion, so no, I have nothing further.
Cindy, have you got that?
Uh, we have that videotaped and I have the timer now.
Thank you.
And I did believe that I did have, I'm just being honest with you, yeah. I, I did note that you were reading up here, which is good, so I saw it, so I had the correct verbiage of what you were saying. I did not catch who made the support for that motion.
I don't think anybody did.
Nobody, anybody did, no, okay. All right, is there any other discussion on this motion? Is there a second for this motion? I'll second that motion. Okay? Is there any other discussion? Then we'll have a roll call vote.
Board Member Brooly?
No.
Board Member Schmette?
No.
Vice Chair Farina?
Yes.
Board Member Goodell?
Yes.
Board Member Lessig?
Yes.
Board Member Menendez?
Yes.
Counselor, is that enough?
Yes, yep, majority of the board is required.
All right. Now, do you have a set of plans? What am I supposed to stamp and give back to you? I have to give something back to you that says it's, you're very... I know you have the stamp, but I don't have any plans from...
Usually all comes from planning. I'm gonna walk out of here with a stamp. Why did you bring this up?
He's, he's got a clean copy.
Frasier Express. Even governmental.
Yeah, I know. Physically challenged.
Hoover's not on our list.
Because they kind of Meyer's, it's bigger than life.
Yeah, I need a second set. Does anybody have a clean set of plans, if I could have?
Mike, do you have a set of clean plans?
I do.
Thank you, sir. I have to give, I have to give one to the city and one to him. And this was... What was it?
23. Variance 23 dash 302.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Thank you.
Can't wait to find my way around that new store. So far, I've gotten lost three times. Where's the light bulbs? No, they were, no, actually, they were over by the fresh side. Yeah, I know.
Next on the agenda. All right, old business and postponed cases, none, new business, none that I'm aware of. This is something I'm not aware of, Mr. Lippman. Unfinished business, and under that, we had election of officers. Ms. Menendez.
We can do each one separately, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to appoint Frank Farina as chair.
A second?
I'll third it.
And Mark Brooly as second, okay.
I accept. Any other, any other nominations?
One more time.
Any other nominations? Hey. We don't, we don't need a vote then.
We don't need to vote?
Correct, as long as no one else is nominated.
We can vote anyway, can't we? We clap him in or something?
We can.
Ms. Menendez.
Okay, I would like to make a motions, a motion to appoint Mike Lessig as vice chair. Nominate, is that the proper terminology, nominate? I always get that wrong.
I would accept that nomination.
Are there any other nominations? Yes, sir.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Menendez for secretary.
Do we have to second that?
Do we do them separately or together?
Um, I would do them one at a time. You don't technically need a second for the nomination, you just need someone to nominate.
You have to accept.
I did accept.
And as long as there, I just want to confirm first, there's no other nominations for vice chair.
Right. Are there any other nominations for vice chairman? Hearing none, we'll move on. Secretary.
Go ahead, Mark.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Menendez for secretary.
I'll accept, thank you.
Okay, are there any other nominations for secretary? Hearing no other nominations, matter is closed?
Congratulations, Roseanne.
Thank you.
And Frank.
Same to you.
Thank you.
Exciting.
Relate. Okay.
Public hearing. No, that was mine.
Planning Commission liaison. We met on the property on, that you guys granted a variance for, the storage facility on Utica. And the planning commission approved their site plan with no parking on the exterior at all. And they plan on doing some very nice things there, so I'm looking forward to an improvement in the way that property looks. Do we have a problem?
Oh, no.
Mr. Lessig? Mr. Lessig?
Oh, I had a, I had a question. We approved a variance on Klein for that building that had the out storage and the blocks and whatever. How long do they have to comply and to move? That was the one over by the high school where they had the cement- Oh, the- Storage area for gravel and material?
I don't, how long do they have to, we've granted them a variance on Klein?
Was, for outdoor storage of aggregates, I think, that's the foundation company?
I don't know if Mr. Lippman was here then.
That predates me, but I, I'll look into it.
Anyway, I, I noticed they've got some excavators out there parked on that pad now too, and I just wondered how long that would be. It seems there's more stuff than there was in March, or whenever we approved it, or- So I just wondered, what's the timeframe?
Yeah, but I think, isn't the approval just for the gravel?
Gravel.
I thought they were moving those cement blocks and they were going to be putting stuff inside and-
It was just for the gravel.
Okay, okay, so they can store their excavators outside?
Yes.
Okay. I'll, I'll run by there and see if there's any aggregates.
I have something for you.
You know what, pull the minutes as well?
I will.
Read what the stipulations were in the minutes?
Okay.
For clarification.
Yeah, I just walked by there the other day at the fan run, so noticed that was there.
Mr. Chmete?
We've granted variances for different parties, and it's been at least a year or two before things had developed because of financing and stuff like that.
Okay.
I'm speaking of a couple of ones, the motel on Grossbeck and high luxury motel on Utica Road. I mean, it, it didn't develop right away, so.
Okay.
It took a while before things, so I don't know if there's a time limit, you know, is there a time limit on variances?
There's something, I have something else to report on the Planning Commission. The owner of the Dairy Queen on Grossbeck came in and wanted a site plan approval, but he wanted to change the site plan that he had submitted, and he, he was asking for direction on where to go, and the council told him that we do not negotiate terms with him, that he needed to make an appointment and see Mr. Lippman and the building department. And has that meeting taken place yet?
Yes, yes. It, it took place the, the week after we met, and it was constructive. Sat down, it was myself, Bob Logan, and the new building official, Dennis. Yeah, and, and we talked through several issues, and many of his issues are legal, so he's gonna have to communicate with, with the city attorney through his attorney, but we, it was productive.
Okay. I have one other question, and then I'll open it up. My favorite question is, where do we stand on Big Boy's?
I, I spoke with Mr. Andrews today. I anticipated your question, Mr. Farina. And I, I don't, I don't know if Mr. Andrews had relayed this when he was at the last Planning Commission meeting, but I will relay it here. Big Boy did acquire the lot behind the Lions Club that they were required to get parking agreements for. That is the last update that we have. I was also assured by Mr. Andrews that he has spoken with city administration, as well as made it very clear to Big Boy and Frasier Hockeyland as well, that per the Planning Commission's requirements, a certificate of occupancy will not be issued until the parking agreements have been recorded and approved by the city attorney's office.
Nice question. You said they've acquired the property behind the Lions Club, or they, they're, I thought they're working on a-
They acquired it.
Okay, they actually purchased it?
They did, yes.
All right.
They're gonna pave it.
Okay.
But as part of the original agreement, they were gonna use that for parking in the agreement, and they still needed the, the out parking at Myers and the school and the skating rink for the amount of people they were gonna have at this-
Right.
Super events they were gonna have.
Right, that's why I wanted to, I thought originally they were talking about an agreement with the Lions Club or whoever owned that property to use it for overflow, but they did actually acquire it completely. Thank you.
Menendez?
My recollection was a, that was a portion, but I think there was something like four-hundred and some odd parking spots that were comprised of quite a few in that area, and then soccer, but I don't know if it's correct, it's maybe hearsay, that soccer has some issues, are they going out of business or something, so how can we get an agreement? I don't know if that's accurate.
I have not heard that. My understanding is they needed agreements with the Lions Club, which they now have the parcel.
Right.
Meyer, Total Soccer, and then Frasier Schools. My understanding was that Total Soccer was asking for, which I'm pretty sure they were, you know, they agreed to, but they were asking for reciprocal parking agreement, so in case Total Soccer, they have a busy event and Frasier Hockeyland doesn't have one that day, that they could also use their shared parking. But that was the less that I had heard.
Because it's just a lot of parking. I mean, it's, it's a lot of space, it's four-hundred and some, so I mean, who's ever responsible for reviewing it has to take into consideration not just the Lions Club, but are, are they meeting those, those requirements there? That's, that's my big thing.
Yeah, I know our office is, we have told the applicant, as well as the city, that the parking agreements required will be for Meyer, Total Soccer, and Frasier Schools. And now they have the Lions Club parcel, but we know that those four agreements are needed.
And the other thing I forgot to mention about the Planning Commission was the decorative fence that this board gave in approval for is in place, and it's under, it's four feet, it's not any higher, and seems to be working well. I think what's making it work so well is that the, the truck, the food truck that was parked there is no longer gonna be allowed to be parked there. And I think they're going to give relief to that gentleman. Okay. There is no public to be heard, so I'm gonna bring it up to the board. Haley, do you have anything?
I have nothing to add.
Mr. Lippman?
Nothing to add.
Cynthia?
Nothing. Thank you.
Mr. Chmete?
Do we have any timeline on the sign ordinance, where that's at? I know we talked about it before.
So I believe it was at the last Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission inquired. I believe Mr. Denault will be at the next Planning Commission meeting with an update on that. He's been working on reviewing that. And then I'm sure he will also update the ZBA as well.
Thank you.
Then we plan on having a joint meeting for both boards.
Is there a draft available of that, or is that premature?
Not yet.
I love to read ordinances when I can't fall asleep. I've written them, they're horrible.
Mr. Burley?
Nothing to add.
Mr. Lessig?
I'm all set.
All right, gimp.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.